About the spending. I know.
Good evening. If you could please take your seats, we'd like to get started. Tonight is, we'd like to welcome you to a special study session of the San Bruno City Council. Roll call, please. Carol?
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here. Second item is public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Tell us your name and your street, please.
Hello, my name is John Barrellier, North San Anselmo. I'm here again to approach the wisdom or lack of wisdom that goes into the thinking that allows firefighters to fight on city time, to shop on city time. Under the heading of "They Should Have Known," can you visualize a huge luxury liner on its side, beached like a big whale? The captain of the Costa Concordia should have known. That nightclub fire in Santa Maria, Brazil, 233 lives were lost. They should have known. At least forty fires have happened in nightclubs, and I remember in particular one that happened a long time ago in 1942 at the Coconut Grove. Four hundred ninety-two people were killed. I remember it specifically because I was a little kid, my mom cried. They should have known. Bernard Madoff ruined thousands of lives because he was trusted. Somebody should have known. The names of Sandusky and Paterna will forever be linked in a sex abuse scandal. Somebody should have known. PG&E should have known of the faulty gas line. People died. Somebody should have known. Somebody didn't do their job. Regarding firefighters shopping, what's the harm? It seems benign enough. They've been doing it for years. It's a tradition. They've got great recipes, and they can really select the leg of lamb. When you see a firefighter in full regalia at the market, you might even feel safer when quite the opposite may be true. We don't hire them to shop. We hire them to get to the fire as quickly as possible, fully armed, to effect rescues, put out the fire. Unless the city has an algorithm which tells the firefighters the quickest, shortest route to and from the supermarket and each street along the way, shopping should be done online. When I asked the fire chief in a closed session why they didn't shop online, he didn't have an answer. Could a firefighter knock down a door and rescue your five-year-old in forty seconds? I think he could, or she could. Would you give up, would you surrender those forty seconds so he could go to the grocery store and shop? I don't think so. Several times I've quoted the San Francisco Fire Chief in saying that in a fire, seconds count. Yes, those seconds can be deadly. Then why, for heaven's sake, would you give the San Bruno firefighters seven million eight hundred eighty thousand seconds to go shopping in a year? Those involved in the Costa Concordia, the nightclub fires, the San Bruno fire explosion, they were just doing everyday mundane things. They never expected to be in a fire or disaster, but it happened in valuable seconds.
Yeah, we've got to wrap it up, John, pretty quick.
Pardon me?
We have to wrap it up pretty quick here.
Okay. Okay, the cost, I've extrapolated it as far as the money is concerned. It costs San Bruno $328,500 a year for the firemen to go shopping. That's two fire trucks, three guys per fire truck, only a half hour shopping. I lowballed it. In a year, that's 2,190 hours per year. And that winds up to be seven million eight hundred eighty thousand seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on public, under public comment? All right, we'll move right to conduct of business. Tonight, the city council will hold a study session on the establishment of the not-for-profit entity called for in the settlement agreement between the City of San Bruno and PG&E, whose purpose is to manage the Community Restitution Fund and to make decisions about the use of the funds for the benefit of the entire San Bruno community. Before we get started with Connie, she's going to lead it off. A couple of housekeeping items. The, our assistants in the back there have flyers, and these flyers are flyers of interest. If you're interested in getting involved in the very near future in the not-for-profit auxiliary, board, ideas, those types of things, I encourage you to put your hand up, get one of these, fill it out, and turn it in before you leave tonight. Name, address, city, state, zip, all that kind of stuff. So, we look forward to a lot of community cooperation on this. Also, just so we know, although it may even come up, the use of the funds tonight will not be discussed. That's not what this meeting is about. We will have many future meetings about that after the not-for-profit is actually set up, up and running. So, having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Connie Jackson, who's going to give us an overview, and then Mark Zaffrono, our city attorney, will do a brief PowerPoint to give us some background and where we are now. Connie?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a study session tonight. This is essentially a workshop that is intended primarily for the city council's discussion among themselves. There will be no specific or formal action taken tonight. Again, it's an opportunity for the city council to talk among themselves and to develop their ideas and direction for our next steps moving forward towards the creation of the not-for-profit entity that we have all been anxiously awaiting so that we can move forward into the next several steps that will be necessary to get to the decision-making regarding the deployment of the funds that the city received as a result of the settlement agreement with PG&E. Just very briefly, there are three things that we're going to try and accomplish tonight, and as the mayor indicated, one thing that is not what tonight's meeting is about. And I'll say that first, and then I'll say it again, and that is that tonight is not our intent to discuss or deliberate about the actual use of the funds. It's our intent to make the next steps towards the creation of the not-for-profit entity that will be tasked with the decision-making, the receipt of information from the community, public participation, and decision-making regarding the use of the funds. So, the three things that we want to do tonight are first to review where we have had some previous discussion about the not-for-profit entity formation, to make sure that the public is well-informed, and those of you who are here in the audience tonight will hear it firsthand. We're also videotaping and cablecasting this meeting live to the public. We'll replay it as well so that we can make sure that the broadest possible distribution of this information is available within the community to anyone who's interested. We'll review where we've been so far. We'll talk about some important concepts that we need city council direction about in order to take the next step, which is to file articles of incorporation with the Secretary of State to actually form the not-for-profit entity. And we'll talk about what the next steps are towards the establishment and the operational start of that not-for-profit entity. Again, we're not talking tonight about the use of the funds specifically, but we know that there are a lot of interests and ideas within the community, and we're all looking forward to the time when we will be able to put that public participation program together with the not-for-profit entity. Tonight, just a matter of how we're going to, how we're going to conduct the study session tonight. Our city attorney, Mark Zaffrono, will spend about ten or fifteen minutes doing an overview of the three topics that I talked about with a PowerPoint presentation. I think there are hard copies of the PowerPoint available in the back of the room if anybody would like to follow that along. And then, before the city council takes up its deliberations among itself, I know that the city council is very interested in hearing from the public, and there will be an opportunity for anybody who's interested, who's here tonight, to comment directly to the city council on the topic that the city council will be discussing. So, we'll turn it over to you, Mark.
Thank you very much, Connie, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public who are here, welcome, and thanks for all of you who might be watching at home. My presentation tonight is going to focus on the five steps that were necessary and are necessary and will be necessary to set up the Community Not-for-Profit Foundation that the city council has been discussing. So, we've gotten through a couple of those steps already. We'll talk about that tonight. And hopefully, we'll get through the third step tonight, and that will leave the fourth and fifth to be dealt with at some future meetings. To review, the first step was the settlement agreement with PG&E. The second thing that occurred was in October, the city council held a public study session at which it discussed some of the items that we're going to be confirming with them tonight. That leads to tonight's meeting, of course, to discuss those ideas and provide some additional direction to staff. The fourth step after tonight's city council study session will be turning it back to the city council at a regular meeting so that they can make certain decisions that are necessary to get the Articles of Incorporation filed. That's the first step to getting the not-for-profit set up. And then finally, we'll talk tonight a little bit about what are the steps that the not-for-profit is going to have to take before it makes any decisions about how to use the funds. So, my presentation has just about ten slides. It's under fifteen minutes. We'll try to keep it to ten. And then we'll open it up to the public for comment, and then turn it back to the city council for some discussion and direction. So, you'll notice on the first slide, we've got a little running tab across the top which indicates what topic we're talking about and whether it's been accomplished or not by the red check mark. So, you can follow along both here and at home. So, just as a reminder for everybody, the settlement agreement included $68.75 million in cash and five lots. And it's important to note that that payment was funded solely by PG&E shareholders and not the ratepayers. Well, you might ask, how do we know that? And the answer is that we are aware of the fact that PG&E sold stock in order to make that payment. So, that's how we know that it's not being paid by the ratepayers. Right now, the city owns the lots because you can't own a lot if you're not in existence yet, and the not-for-profit isn't in existence. So, if those lots are sold, the proceeds would be transferred to the not-for-profit. The not-for-profit is to be established, to manage funds for the benefit of the entire city, and it's also important to know that the city funds can't be used for general city operations. Well, why is that? And the answer is that during the negotiations, PG&E was quite clear that they didn't want those funds being used by the city for general revenue purposes, for the general fund, for employee salaries, and those kinds of things. And so, they insisted, and one of the terms of the agreement is to set up a not-for-profit in order to make sure that, that the funds are used for the benefit of the entire community. So, that was the first step of five, and the second step was that the city council did have a study session back in October, and we discussed a half a dozen topics. What would the purpose of the not-for-profit be? What about the mission statement? Composition of the governing board, really generally, in terms of number and categories of membership. Nobody was appointed to the board, and we don't anticipate that would occur tonight. The council also talked about establishing an advisory committee, which might consist of a wide variety of members from the community to help it make its decisions about how the funds should be spent. And then finally, we talked a little bit about what, what should the name of the not-for-profit be? So, starting with the next slide, we're going to be talking about each of those six topics. And so, let's take a look at the first one, which is the purpose of the not-for-profit. And we called together some of the ideas and consensus that existed at the last city council meeting and came up with the following. And so, in case you can't read it, let me just read that off to you. It says, "To benefit the San Bruno community through enduring and significant investments in facilities and programs over the long term." So, making a decision about the purpose of the not-for-profit is one of the two important decisions that we're going to ask the city council for direction for tonight. Because in order to file the Articles of Incorporation, we have to say, what's the purpose of the not-for-profit? So, that's what we, what we came up with. The next thing that was discussed is the mission statement, and that's a slightly narrower question. What would the mission of the not-for-profit be given that purpose? And at the last meeting, there were a lot of things that were discussed. For example, should we use the funds? Or should the mission be to build or improve one or more public facilities? Should it be to provide one-time or ongoing funds? Should it be to engage in fundraising? And there was some discussion about that. And I think it's fair to say that, that the consensus of the city council at that time was that the mission should be to invest in public facilities and provide an ongoing endowment for programs and organizations that benefit the San Bruno community. And the reason why that language is important is because it evidences what we think the intent of the city council is in not having a one-time, spend the money today, it's gone tomorrow, approach to, to the use of these funds, and to have it be an ongoing, long-term endowment, both for programs and facilities that the City of San Bruno and the entire community can be, can be proud of. One of the other things that was discussed at the last meeting were the number of board members. That's really a matter of discretion, but I think the city council felt comfortable with some number in the neighborhood of five or seven. Actually, it turns out, we don't need to make that decision before filing the Articles of Incorporation. That's a decision that can be made later. So, that's something that if the council does wish to discuss tonight, we'd be happy to take that input, or if not, it can be deferred to another time. There were a few other items that were discussed at the last meeting that we wanted to bring up just to advise all of you and members of the public. We discussed whether the board should have an advisory committee with a wide range of members. Already talked about that, and there seemed to be a general consensus that would be a good idea. We also talked a little bit about the staffing plan. In other words, how would it get started? Would city staff help at first, and then the not-for-profit would hire its own professionals and use volunteers? And one of the important points that emerged is that if city staff is used, for example, especially in the startup phase, that those costs could be reimbursed from the $50 million trust that was set up. And so, thereby, the city wouldn't have to incur any additional cost in, in doing that short-term sort of setup. And then thereafter, the not-for-profit could hire its own professionals and use volunteers as it deemed appropriate.
And Mark, if I may, maybe you could just, you know, hit on that point. Seventy million versus fifty million trust versus?
Right. So, you may remember that after, after the disaster, PG&E ended up paying the city, pledging a total of $50 million to provide reimbursement to the city for all of its costs in repairing all the damaged infrastructure in the neighborhood, covering all of its costs in responding to the disaster, both short-term and long-term, among many other things. And so, that's a fund that was set up independently of the $70 million that's allocated to the not-for-profit. Finally, we wanted to point out that one of the important decisions the city council is going to have to make is what are the bylaws of the not-for-profit going to be? And to a lot of people, that sounds like a boring legal issue, but in fact, it's an important thing because the bylaws really are talking about the structure of how the not-for-profit is supposed to operate, and what are the rules and regulations that it's going to operate by? So, that'll be an important thing that we'll want to talk about with the city council at a later date. All right. Lastly, we want to talk a little bit about what's the name of the nonprofit? And you might wonder, why is that important? And the reason is because that's the second thing that has to be in the Articles of Incorporation. We have to have a name, and we have to have a purpose. So, we looked at the discussion from the last meeting and came up with the following potential name, the San Bruno Community Foundation. There were other words that were bandied around at the meeting. Might be a community fund, might be a civic fund, a civic improvement fund, something along those lines, but it seemed as if the San Bruno Community Foundation expressed what everybody was, was interested in. So, we're now at the point where, once the city council gives staff some direction about the name and the purpose, we'll actually be, have completed the third of our five major steps to getting the not-for-profit off the ground. So, let's take a look at what the city council is going to need to do in some upcoming meetings. Well, there's a couple of things. First of all, they'll need to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor or some other official of the city to sign the Articles of Incorporation. And then the second thing the city council will need to do is direct staff to begin drafting bylaws and other legal documents to get the corporation off the ground. City council will also need to begin the process of selecting members of the board. And once all that is done, then we can move to the fifth step, which is having meetings of the not-for-profit. So, that's our final slide, final two slides, actually. Let's take a look at that. What will those meetings look like? Well, the first thing that the not-for-profit will need to do, once it's formed and the board of directors is appointed, is they'll have to appoint officers, a president, vice president, or chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer, those kinds of things. The board will also need to adopt some other legal documents. That would include some tax documents, maybe an agreement with the city to use some of its space to have meetings, maybe for staffing, those kinds of things. And then the not-for-profit will also have to discuss some sort of staffing plan, both in the short term and then in the longer term. A couple of other things the not-for-profit will have to do. It'll have to discuss formation of that advisory committee that we talked about earlier, so that, that's going to be an important task. And what might that committee do? Who would be on it? What kind of meeting schedule would it have? Those kinds of things. One of the other topics the not-for-profit might wish to discuss is what kind of communication plan to have? Should they have a website? What, what sort of public outreach will they be doing? So, they'll need to discuss that. And then last but not least, and perhaps most importantly, is they'll need to adopt a schedule for public meetings and community input, so all of you can come to those meetings and tell them what you think the money should be spent on, what the priorities ought to be, and those sorts of things. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But now, if there aren't any, I think that the city council would be happy to hear from members of the public.
Council have any questions right now, Mark or Connie? And why don't I open it up to any members of the public that may have questions or comments at this point in time? Step right to the podium. Okay. There we go. Just tell us your name and your street.
Yeah, good evening. My name's John McLaughlin. I live on Claremont. And I'm here because I'm very interested in the direction you're going, and I understand the parameters that you've set. There are a couple of concerns I have that I think are very important because I think if they're done right, everything else will fall in place. I think openness and transparency is really critical. This, the city is kind of unique in that people develop a level of distrust because they don't feel they're hearing about things. They tend to react to it. That's, I guess, that's, that's a very normal reaction, but I've seen that happen with ballot items where they haven't gotten the support. The other one is inclusion, and I think Mayor Ruane touched on that. I think it's, there are a lot of different groups and interests in the city that the one thing they have in common is they're all trying to do the best they can for the city and help the city. And a strategy that includes them and finds a way to get information for them is very critical. And I would encourage you, the council, to, to work on that. You mentioned funding some of the startup costs from the $50 million fund. I would assume you'd reimburse the $50 million fund because, as you know probably better than I do, that fund was designed to cover the costs in the Crestmore neighborhood. And I think if money's drawn from there, and there are requirements for the Crestmore neighborhood, that the money should go back or should be reimbursed at some point in time. I also encourage you to read the agreement very carefully. PG&E may have said some things, but they're not in the agreement in terms of how the money is used. And frankly, from my personal perspective, what PG&E wants is probably the least important consideration. You know, we've seen what PG&E does, and we've seen how PG&E treats the people in my neighborhood when, when they're trying to recover what the costs and satisfaction and relief over what's happened to them. So, I would encourage you to read it and do what's right for the community. I understand nonprofits. I currently consult for one. I have a management and finance contract. I managed a nonprofit for three years. So, I have a very good understanding of how they operate, and I've had a chance to work with a couple of boards. Also, IRS tends to lump nonprofits with both government entities like school boards, which, as some of you remember, I was on, and government organizations. And I actually retired from the IRS, so I have a fairly good understanding of how nonprofits work, how they're set up, some, a lot of the requirements that they have to go through once they're set up and once they're going through a gestation period. So, I would encourage you to consider the comments I've made. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and I would encourage you to fill out one of these interest cards for us, please. Thank you.
Maria Barr, Concordway.
Maria, why don't you pull, pull that down? There you go.
The information you're giving us today is very important, very insightful, and very hopeful for the whole community. I have one very important concern, and that is because in a few years, a lot of us are not going to be here, and the fund is going to be remembered as the San Bruno Community Fund. But I would desperately ask you to consider somehow to have the name Crestmore Community Fund. Consider that because forever, as long as San Bruno exists, that whoever looks at that fund or gets benefit from the fund will remember somehow that people died, people suffered, and that never should be forgotten. And that's why I strongly recommend that Crestmore be in there somehow in the name. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, why don't we open it up right now to council discussion regarding the couple of items that we need to have some consensus on this evening? And that is, first of all, the purpose of the not-for-profit. And we had spoken back in October and subsequently about the purpose being to benefit the San Bruno community through enduring significant investments in facilities and programs over the long term. Any discussion about that, or is that something that you would like to stick with? Start with Ken.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important that we get, we be as flexible as possible. I don't think we want to be too specific and, you know, and lock ourselves, lock ourselves into something that will become an ongoing debate or, or get criticized. I noticed that in a lot of the comments here that the word investing, investment is, is used. And I think it's a good term to use, but I'm, I'm almost leaning towards maybe including a word like contribute. Investment seems more like a, you know, like we're, we're going to make, you know, we're obligated to make a payment or something. I don't know. It's just, I get, I get that impression that it's, it just seems more, I guess, more passionate to use a word like contribute. So, I mean, maybe not replace the term investment, but maybe consider adding, adding another softer term to that. But I think overall, I think overall, we're, we're covering all the bases, and we, you know, and who's ever going to be making the decisions can, you know, can, can make, can include. and who's ever going to be making the decisions can, you know, can make, can include that in the, in the purpose.
All right. Michael?
I guess I would, I would want some clarification legally, what does enduring and significant mean? Are there parameters that somebody could attach to that and say, no, whatever project you're considering is not enduring, or it's not significant? Or is that, can we interpret that to mean pretty much a range of anything we can come up with?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really think legally it's a problem, especially because the much more specific topics that you might wish to consider are going to end up being in the bylaws and in subsequent documents that are prepared. I think the, the purpose is really to let the public know, and the Secretary of State know mostly what you're not going to be doing. So, it's, it's really meant to be as broad as possible, and not limited in, in any particular way, and I don't think any of these terms really limit the discretion of the not-for-profit board or the city council.
Okay. Aside from that, I'm comfortable with the language, the way it's written.
Okay. Rico?
I also want to keep it very broad-based. It would concern me that anybody would come in and read this and say, well, they're obviously talking about facilities only, or programs. Maybe you have facilities first because of the alphabet, and it starts first, F before. But, I would want to keep it as broad-based as possible. I'd want the board to have long-reaching possibilities and not have anything held very close. I want them to be able to think outside the box and benefit the community as a whole. So, since you've answered council member Salazar's comments in regards to significant investments in facilities and programs, I think, I mean, we can go around and around on, on specific words, but I think this encapsulates what we were talking about prior, and I'm comfortable with that, with that understanding.
Okay. And, Mark, is that something that could be embellished a little bit in the bylaws? Or?
Well, yes, and, I was also going to say that you'll, you'll get another crack at this when it comes back to you in the form of resolution. So, if there's some tweaking that you'd like us to take a look at in the meantime, we'd be happy to do that as well and bring back, you know, a couple of alternatives if you'd like us to.
Irene?
I was playing, I was playing around with the, the word contributions that Ken had suggested, and I think it's an important addition, and I'd like us to see if we could put it in where it says, "To benefit the San Bruno community through enduring and significant contributions to and investments in, investments in facilities and programs over the long term." Is that kind of what you're looking for?
I think so.
It's all that schoolteacher stuff. So, I'd like us to-
Could you read that one more time, Irene?
Sure. To benefit the San Bruno community through enduring and significant contributions to and investments in facilities and programs over the long term.
Thank you.
That, that would be the only change I would even suggest. I think the rest of it is, addresses all the things that we talked about before.
Ken?
Okay, this just came to mind. So, my colleague says that we're looking at a building or a facility, and obviously we can look at programs where there's groups of people. So, we're, are we purposely excluding individuals? I mean, it comes to, it just came to mind that we're doing a fundraiser for this family because of this individual. I mean, is, I mean, would that be something that possibly the foundation may want to contribute to in the future?
I don't think that the purpose of the not-for-profit tonight and going forward has to get so specific that we start to include or exclude anything. I think we want it sort of as general as possible. We all know-
No, I agree, yeah.
-as far as investments in facilities and contributions to, to programs, you know, can mean a much larger entities or groups, in my mind, anyway, down to possibly individuals or some very, very small entities within the city. That I, the whole purpose of the $70 million in aggregate is, in fact, to help this whole community go forward, whether that's an individual, whether that's, you know, a much, a much larger entity within the city. So, I don't want to get, I'm just speaking for myself now, tied up in, in the language too much. I think in general, even with the, with the addition that Irene and you suggested here, that's fine with me, because we can fine-tune this as we go forward, and I think the not-for-profit board will in fact have the ability and the authority, with a lot of public input, to do some very good things for smaller and larger entities and facilities in this city. And saying that, I'm, I'm happy with, with the wording as Irene suggested.
If I may, too, Mr. Mayor, through the, through the chair, I think the word programs is broad enough to encompass just about anything. For example, you could have a scholarship program that certainly benefits the entire community, to have a scholarship program, but then the scholarships might be awarded to some subset of the community. So, I don't think that would violate the, the purpose.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that input.
Okay.
So, next decision-
The next item is the mission statement?
Next item is the name.
Is the name?
Right.
Oh, okay, the name.
Don't, don't have to decide the mission statement tonight if you don't want to.
Let me see, where are we here? Where was the?
Toward the back.
Okay. What we talked about before on October and subsequently is the San Bruno Community Foundation. There was a discussion about putting the word fund in there, civic improvement. Start with you again, Ken.
Well, I, I think it's very clear what it's for. I mean, I think the people will learn what, you know, the details of how, how it'll work. I can, I can truly appreciate the speaker, the resident, you know, wanting to be specific in remembering, you know, our, the families in, in the disaster. I just can't think that we're going to ever forget why this money was here. And, I think if you include a specific neighborhood in the, in the name, that it, it may have actually be confusing, you know, in the future. I firmly believe that as we publicize this foundation, as we do a website, as we do brochures and everything, there should be a description of how this fund was put together, and, you know, and be as specific and memorable as possible to, to those victims.
Okay. Michael?
I think I agree with, with Ken, with Ms. Barr said was, I mean, it, I agree with what she was saying. We definitely do not want to ever forget why we have this money and why this money's available to the community. But, I think in our initial discussion, we said that the name should reflect the purpose of the not-for-profit. And, so I'm inclined to leave it the way it is, but like Ken mentioned, we should take every opportunity going forward to make sure that we do remind everyone of why, why we have the money.
Okay. Rico?
I would encourage my two other colleagues. I think that we certainly have remembered it in the first year, the second year, certainly down at the city park, when we rebuild the park up in the Crestmore, Glenview area. Obviously, I believe there may be some steps to remember that as well. I don't think this is anything, anyone who lived here or who was born here, who's, who's moved away, wasn't touched, wasn't shocked, wasn't horrified by the disaster that happened. I know that's something that I will remember, I will live with, the devastation that I witnessed that night, and also the community that came together as a whole. We were at our darkest time, and yet, this town, which is noted for the city with a heart, truly showed what it was. It was a community that came together at a very, very challenging time. I believe we should keep this as it is. I believe it is for the community as a whole, and I believe as the whole community, we will not forget.
Irene?
That was eloquently said, and I agree with all three of you. Thank you.
And, very well said also. I was there, obviously, as we all were, and it's something that will not be forgotten, and it's, it's nothing that's, that's just going to ride with this alone. All of the things that we've been doing the last almost 29 months now, you know, are reflective of what happened that night and where it happened. And, it's, it's, it's not in the bigger picture. It's, the reason the $70 million was set up was for the benefit of the victim, which is the larger victim, was the city of San Bruno. But, we all know, you know, where this started, and we'll never forget that. So, I think the San Bruno Community Foundation says it all from a standpoint of what we'd like to name this not-for-profit.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think with those two decisions, we can check off the third of five steps on our little flow chart. And, the next step for the city council would be at an upcoming regular meeting. The staff would prepare a resolution that would indicate the purpose and the name that you've discussed tonight, give you another opportunity to weigh in on it, and then authorize the mayor to sign the articles of incorporation, get that going, and then to get direct staff to begin drafting the bylaws and the other important legal documents to get the not-for-profit started up. And then, finally, to have the city, give the city council an opportunity to select members of the not-for-profit board again at, at a later date.
How soon can we get the articles in and done?
I think once the articles are signed off by the city, it's a matter of delivering them to the Secretary of State. It's, it's a matter of less than 30 days before that all happens.
Okay. And then, shortly after that, we can meet again and talk about the makeup of the board and, and how we're going to solicit and get some ideas and things.
That's right.
Good. Would the public like to comment any, any long, any more on, on this evening's meeting? We're, please.
Ed Fuentes on Cypress Avenue. I just have one quick comment on the name. It would be a good idea to do some quick searches out there on the name, on San Bruno Community Foundation, just to make sure there's not another state out there that has that name, another country, that could later on be very confusing for the foundation, for community members to find it. It happens quite frequently. We don't want a website that says, "San Bruno Community Foundation, 5,332," at yahoo.com. So, that, that would be my-
Very good point.
-my comment.
Very good point.
Thank you.
Good. Anyone else?
I live on Claremont Drive. Just a couple of comments regarding the makeup of the board that you're about to propose. I think they have to be residents of San Bruno. I don't think people that live all over the place should be allowed to make decisions about money that's given to San Bruno. And so, I think whether or not that has to be part of the bylaws, I don't know, but I think that has to be stated. If, for example, they move out, then got to get somebody new. While, at the same time, advisory committee, if you have an advisory committee, they may not necessarily be limited to the city. You may be, you may have advisors from money advisors, or some sort of advisors that you would want to, to get from somebody, someplace else. Also, maybe a question about, there's a little mention about staffing, and, you know, hiring people always creates issues, and I'm wondering if, if you would consider a possibility of just, could this foundation, like, pay the city to use city staffing, or something like that? If that's an option.
Okay. And I think Mark highlighted that point regarding the $50 million versus the $70 million, and if there's-
Right.
-the $50 million is actually not to take care, not to take care of only the physical restoration of the neighborhood, but all other associated costs. And, you know, we'll see where that lies in there, but the reimbursement can, can definitely-
Well, I was, I was thinking in terms of, once the, once the, the foundation begins operations, if there's some staffing that they needed to, to use, as opposed to hire their own staffing, or whatever, just pay for, you know, contract with somebody to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions, discussion? All right. I think we've pretty much achieved what we set out to this evening. Any, any other comments from the council? No? Rico?
After the articles of incorporation, then we, obviously, there's the bylaws. And that question of the bylaws could either be taken to the appointed board, or can be established and worked on at the council level. Has that something we have looked at? I know I have my personal preference at, as I sit here tonight, but I didn't know what the thought or plan was that, was that of staff.
So, we're certainly open to suggestions from the council. If you'd like to direct us to a start, not so much drafting the bylaws, but providing you with some alternatives regarding the bylaws. As a city council, you're certainly authorized to, to do that and to make that decision and to adopt the bylaws, if you, if you wish to do that. Alternatively, you could defer to the board of the not-for-profit once it's established, but then make a decision that the bylaws would be subject to approval by the city council. So, you could either go first, you could wait for them to act, but make it subject to your approval, or do something else that perhaps we, we haven't thought about yet. But, we're certainly open to direction this evening about what you'd like us to bring back to you at the next city council meeting.
The gentleman said he stressed transparency and inclusion, and I want to be included in it, but I also want, I also don't want the residents to think that we're doing a lot of the work behind the scenes, so that we should possibly do a little bit of both, probably get, get a good idea of, and possibly even select the board, but then, you know, work together and possibly in a, in a, in a situation like this as a study session, you know, with the city council and newly-appointed board, and, and work on the bylaws. I don't know what the structure of these bylaws are going to be. It's not, you know, it's been a while since I reviewed bylaws of a foundation, but I know it's pretty dry stuff. So, but pretty detailed and important issues also. But, I think personally, and I think my colleagues feel that we do want to be a part of that, that, that decision-making.
Absolutely. Michael?
I think, and Rico, I don't think you actually stated your preference, but, yeah.
Wish you would.
I, I think I agree with, with Ken, that the, at least the initial bylaws should be created and reviewed by the city council, and then ratified by the board, once the board is created. And, also, just in order to speed things up and make sure that we, we're not making everything happen serially, we can, if possible, start developing a framework for those bylaws as we develop the, the articles of incorporation. And, hopefully, we'll see those pretty soon. I'm assuming next, I don't know, month or so? I mean, I think it's a month after we adopt them-
I think that's reasonable.
-but we'll, we should be able to vote on those within a month.
Good.
Mr. Mayor?
Rico?
Michael's right, I did make my preference known, so let me make it known. I believe that the council should have and work on the bylaws. I think as we do with any committee, commissioner, or board, it does come with some staff preparation, but I think the council makes the establishment, sets the priorities and the parameters, and then the group obviously can review, ask for modifications or changes, have to come back to the city council, the elected body, and to have those adopted. That's why, you know, and I still feel the same way as far as, you know, which we have to come back to, because the last time we met, we didn't have a consensus, more or less, was about who has the final decision-making. Is that going to be at the board, or is that going to be at the council? I've expressed my preference to that before, I'll do it again if we need, but I think as far as the bylaws, I do think we should review them and come up with the parameters and what the goals and the missions should be.
Okay. Agreed. Irene?
I agree, too. So, just to reiterate what I think I'm hearing, so we're asking staff to come back with some kind of framework of bylaws. There's thousands of bylaws out there. They are pretty cut and dry. It's like, you know, there's so many members, and, you know, this framework is there. So, yes, I think we should have some samples, have some things in front of us, have the public there that they can put in their input, and then we can come down with some kind of consensus, so. So, can we do that before we actually incorporate? Can we have another study session and start doing that?
That's, that's- That's, that's certainly possible. I think we can, I agree with the council member that indicated, we can have these things going on really parallel tracks, bringing to the city council the articles of incorporation, at the same time working on some templates for you with some decision points in the bylaws as to what the options are for the important provisions.
Yes. I would like us to do that. We, we and the public have waited a long time to get going, and everything takes longer than we always anticipate, so I think we should start. Pardon me? No.
Let's just say it's not fast.
It's cautious. Cautious. We want to do it as, as correctly and as thoroughly as we can.
And it, it's an exciting time now because we're really, you know, the, our feet are hitting the road here now, and I, I think it's, it's going to be very good going forward. But as I said to someone today, I said, we've tried to take our time and do everything as right as we think we can. We don't want to rush into anything. But I think we're to the point now where we can actually, you know, put something down, pen to paper, and, and send it to the Secretary of State and get this ball rolling so we can actually get a board up and see what we'd like to do for this community and do some very positive things.
In addition, and I know, appreciate the public coming out, and I think it's important that every time we have a study session, that they can leave with knowing that something was accomplished. And I don't want to start with a clean slate or something, but if we can come in with, like you said, a template of bylaws, probably have some, also some guidelines on the makeup of, of the board members, you know, and, and get the input from, from the public on, you know, on that started also.
Okay. Mark, do you need anything else?
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Okay. This meeting will stand adjourned to our next regular city council meeting on February 12, 2013, right here. And I do encourage you, if you're interested at all in getting involved in the very near future, we have these at the back of the room, please take one and fill it out. Thank you very, very much for your attendance this evening, and you'll be hearing very shortly from us. Meeting adjourned.